So as we're waiting for Pete, um, thank you for coming. Um, I will only be asking or allowing the public to make comments during public comments. So if you have anything that throughout the agenda that you'd like to discuss or for the board to hear, please complete these forms and then we'll have one.
Is that a board policy or?
It's just uh, the way I'm gonna run this meeting today. So please, I'll give you a few minutes to write up any, any forms that you'd like the board to hear. Alright, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Coming back from closed session at 6:48, up to roll call again. And I am present. Mr. Roberts here, Ms. Lopez.
Yeah.
Mr. Gonzalez is still absent, Mr. Pryor present. Uh, Ms. Benadet.
Here.
And Mr. Guzman.
Present.
Welcome, Mr. Guzman.
Thank you.
Orby, we look towards it very closely on all these things that we do here.
Thanks.
I am going to give you a few minutes to put together some of these forms that you're.
I'm sure you. I'm sure you forward.
Hi, uh, hello, this is Kathleen.
Oh, I got it.
We, we actually just, um, are just out of closed session and we are about to start. So why don't we, um, and yes, we are, we are, we're doing the zoom. So what I'd like you to do is just, um, we'd have to move up the agenda. Okay, so, um, we're gonna, thank you for that. So, um, you're part of our discussion items and so we'll, we'll do that and you can get to talk to the board and so on. And then we'll, and we'll sign off from there. Okay? Alright, so we'll. Okay, very well, we'll, we'll, we'll get to you, thanks, bye bye. That's her, so she'll have it on.
So when we.
So we'll be ready to go.
Okay.
Okay. A few more minutes for public comments. Okay, so I have a public comment west side.
A few minutes, huh? Okay. I'm gonna do this, it's the other deal. Hard to be in both shot, but that's alright, I guess I'll just keep it up here. Reaction is more important. Uh, it doesn't wanna work. Um, yeah, so actually using, using the amplified sound would help. Um, I came to ask if you would go ahead and make these videos available online. And, uh, and then I also hear you say that the public only has one opportunity to talk and that's right now. And that actually obfuscates an awful lot of what any kind of transparency, accountability, truth, relationship, anything like that, I mean, it's, it's a snub. It's, it's majorly a snub and, uh, it's very heavy-handed. I don't, I don't understand the reasoning of it, which just goes more to the reason that I'm not even sure that, that you all's even qualified to do what you're saying you're doing because this is all just very, keep on closing in. And it's not, it's not right, this is a public process, it's public money. You know, I don't think any other board does this, I mean, actually, it's goofy, I don't even see why you can make your own rules to make sure that you stay at least three, five levels above everyone else when you're just supposed to be accountable to people. And it's supposed to be a public process, not just a report and go home because we're gonna do what we feel like anyway. That's wrong. Supposed to be a public process, make it so, put these videos available online for free. Please, then I wouldn't have to come here no more. I'd like to go home, not even worry about you folks, but you keep on driving me back. Do better in your job. I'm disappointed, this is supposed to be everybody included. Now I'm yelling because there's no microphone on, you're not gonna use your microphone. You're gonna speak softly so you don't get recorded because these are about protecting your rights, not anybody else's. And it's wrong.
Thank you for your comment.
Uh, I didn't understand, well, I'm, I'm disappointed, this is a new year. You know, you talked about moving forward today, uh, you know, you, you said that. And then now something we've advocated for, being able to speak and share our thoughts on issues, which, you know, this is what we had issues last year, you're creating policies as you go along. And, um, if you can give me a reasoning for not allowing people to give public comment to each agenda item, I'd love to hear your logic, was that voted on? Is that something you decided as president? You know, what's, what's the issue? You know, we want, you invite to have open dialogues, but this, I, you got me off guard on this one. You know, along this investigation process, you know, you guys are kind of a impasse right now. You guys can decide to be a better board or continue the stuff that's been continued for a lot of years. Uh, it's unfortunate, you know, saying we met with Augustine, it was, it was really disappointing because I understand that you're a non-profit board. Trust me, I'm very familiar with the processes of things, just because you don't wanna do things right or you think you have the flexibility to do that, doesn't mean you should. I think addressing issues is number one, I, I just, you know, I, I might be reaching out to each one of you this week, you know, as Augustine said, to give you an opportunity to meet, have a conversation and see what, what you guys see for the school. I just, this, this was pretty disappointing, that you have, you have an answer of why you guys did this?
Public comment, no.
And who made that decision?
I, as the board president running this meeting, have the ability to either accept comments or not accept comments today. Um, I will not be accepting comments other than in public comment. If you'd like to discuss any of the items that are on the agenda, please fill out a form, I will take it, I will wait until, and if you have something for the board to consider on the items that are going to be discussed today, that's, that's your opportunity to break it up.
So I've got one brief item I wanna discuss and then.
Technically, that's how it works, yes. But if you want, if there are items that you'd like to discuss, right now would be your opportunity to share them with the board because there will be some decisions being made today and your input is invaluable, so this is the time. That's.
So you want me to file some more forms to discuss?
If you, that's, you, you gave me a blank one right now and you're discussing these things, if there are things that you'd like to address to this board about the items that are going to be discussed later, this is the time to do it.
Okay, well, I'll discuss the, sure, I'll just go off the, that is the investigation results as you saw, we received the investigation. Um, and, uh, I know, you know, blaming it or costing the school money, I, I wish that, um, you know, when we asked to meet back in February, that with, with you and Mike, that was taken. You know, as we go forward with other issues we're having now, avoiding them or ignoring them is not gonna, not gonna end well. I think the goal should be to address all issues. And addressing issues doesn't mean have a conversation and then say, oh, well, we heard you and we're still gonna do whatever we want. It's, we're gonna work with you to resolve the issue. That's, that's what got this board and administration into the mess to begin with, is not addressing the issues, you know. Uh, I'm sure you all have good, good, uh, good thoughts and, and a good heart, but the reality is there's some pretty big failures that happened, you know, and you were all made aware of this along the process and there's still issues that, um, you know, we're, we're waiting to hear resolutions on, and one of them is the public records. You know, it's been since October of last year and other than one public record, nothing has been provided. I mean, it's one thing to say you have nothing to hide, but it's another thing when you don't provide the information requested. The other thing is, you know, we're just asking you guys to do things right, not to go make up rules so you, you know. Surprise, now you guys can't talk during something we've been doing for the last three years? I mean, I'd love to hear the reasoning behind it, it just seems like.
That's my prerogative today. Today, this meeting, that's my prerogative today.
Hmm.
Today. Next meeting might be a completely different one, but that is my prerogative as a, as the person chairing the meeting.
I appreciate I've been interrupting you. Appreciate I've been interrupting you. I just, I doesn't make any sense to me, alright?
Thank you. Alright, let's move on to, there are no minutes to, whoop, we have to approve this agenda presented. Um, everyone looked at the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda that's presented?
I saw who.
Can I get a second? Erica, you got those? Okay. All those, um, all those, if they approve the agenda that's presented, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, there are no minutes to, um, review or approve at this time, so we go into discussion items. Um, actual report when we go back, a report from closed session. Um, let's see, we had a discussion, well, I'll move it on to, as part of the other, um, we discussed a few things about our administration opening up and so we're moving forward with a plan that will be presented later. And then we have, um, part of 6.1, which is the ACE USD investigation report that we already received. Um, I just have to report back that everyone has had an opportunity to look at it and we've asked our legal counsel to prepare a response to the report. And that will be presented to us first and then to the, to the, um, to the district after, after it's completed. And that's all I have to report on that. Uh, 6.2, contracting of a cleaning company for janitorial services. Lucy, I'm gonna go that to you.
So, like I mentioned to the board earlier, um, the governor had estimated an average of about $344 ADA per student. We got the, the result, you know, it changed and we took a hit, now it's, um, 187 per ADA student, so our budget is impacted drastically. Um, so we had to look at where we could save money and prioritize, right? So, um, one of the things that were budgeted for was custodial services. Um, we looked at some options and we were comparing to see whether we can save money there. So after getting three different estimates from three different companies that we can possibly contract one, um, it's an average savings of about $50,000 that we can save it. And if you look at the attachment, we have the proposals there. And we did meet, they came in, um, Erica spoke to them, they looked at the, you know, obviously the building and gave us estimates of what they would do, they'd be here every day, same time as our janitors after school, not during school day. And then we would keep our janitor on call for any additional maintenance, any to be done around campus. So.
Here we get a chance to read all of those.
We know we looked at them.
And the questions so far before, we're in a, we're going to probably approve one of these contracts, but any questions on the contracts as you see them?
I was amazed at the difference in the.
The pricing, yeah.
The one company's significantly lower than the others and would seemingly by the list of, uh, what they, I'm sorry.
Lucy, you have a question, did you guys meet, or Erica, did you meet all three companies as they came by and?
Well, anyway, I was amazed at the difference in the prices and, um, the one company gave a more comprehensive list of what they thought they would be doing.
Right.
Um, and it looked much more impressive, more professional, et cetera. Granted, there's going to be, uh, I don't know, my computer will shrink, but. In any case, um, there's going to be charges upfront, but the one company, the third one.
Central Coast, really?
Yes, Central Coast, they seem to be really, uh, hitting us per visit, just seemed a, a difficult way to go about it for $1,500 a week, so.
Yeah, the first company seemed to be very, um, excited that he was working with the school and they were like willing to work with us and gave us like the best deal he could possibly give us just because we were a school. So that's the pure janitorial.
Alright. Good.
I'm glad you have local companies, so.
Alright, any other questions? Okay.
Oh, well, just two more things, they did, uh, I liked in their general part, when they said, "Does not have the authority and will not grant access to any person requesting entry into the building or specific work area." So, I liked that they were very specific about that. And then there was another piece about, oh yeah, "Thoroughly trained oriented in building equipment and supplies used and methods," so.
Anyone else? Okay. Alright, so let's move on to, um, 6.3, possible contracting of Monty Cafe for administrative support. Um, is the site agree with the, also, school district, um, specified of bringing in somebody to provide either interim or a qualified person, so we, to, to run the school as the administrator, executive director. We sought out to look for, um, a company that could provide a contractor that could provide a little bit of services so we wouldn't be committed long-term to one person until we go through the hiring process of, uh, the executive director. And so this is a B company that provides those type of services, so we're gonna hear a presentation from her, the board, and, um, and then possibly, possibly contracting. So you don't know, she's gonna dial in and so. I'm sorry, you dial out.
Hello, can you hear us, Kathleen?
Oh, hi.
Hi, I'm Lucy.
Hi.
The board is here, let me see.
Turn the dial up maybe?
Let me turn on the speaker too.
So Kathleen, you're, um, we're actually at the official meeting, so, um, we can't hear you actually at all.
Oh.
Hold on.
Can you hear us? Kathleen, can you hear us?
Hi, you're coming in now, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Perfect. Okay.
So.
Nice to see you.
Yeah. So can you just give just a brief overview of, um, our meeting and then your, you know, type of services that you provide, just, just a brief introduction for everyone?
Sure, my name is Kathleen Darty and I am the founder and managing partner of Monty Cafe LLC, which is an educational consulting firm. And, uh, it is run by my partner and myself, Michelle Schutz is the partner. And we are both retired superintendents. Uh, we offer services to districts and to charter schools. We've done a lot of work with charter schools and have been since, uh, since I retired in the fall of 2015, have been working with several needy charter schools in the area of, uh, getting back into good standing, uh, bringing their budgets back in line if that was necessary, doing, uh, employment, uh, staffing, um, doing their policies and procedures, helping the boards with board development, meeting management, conflict of interest Brown Act, but also doing detective searches to find their next through executive director, director, or even principal director, depending on what it looks like. Uh, we are currently working in Orange County, and that's where I am right now, I'm finishing up a contract down here with Oxford Preparatory Academy, who, uh, was, um, in the process of being revoked. And now we have an MOU in place that bought them another year so that they can fix, find the fixes and fix this. So that's what I do. We also both coach, um, administrators, aspiring administrators and administrators in a new position. Um, we work for Placenta County Office of Education and do that, although recently we've also picked up clients down here in Orange County for coaching, uh, for their tier two credential. And, uh, we have, uh, a, a back office staff that does, uh, business, that does personnel, human resources, um, and then again, policies and procedures. So we've worked with, with CCSA, uh, a bit and I know that that's not your favorite company, I, I, from the last time I was down there, I remember that. Um, but I also have done some work several years ago with Eric Wemec. So just a, so that a charter development center is at the top of our list as being a really quality organization as well. Uh, last time we came down, we had a meeting and you kinda talked to me about what your needs were and, uh, what we could do for you, which looks like you've got a letter of concern that addresses some findings, um, based on a complaint that was, uh, done by a parent. And so many of the complaints were not, there were no findings on the complaints, but there were a few and so those are your areas of correction. So those are things that we are happy to, uh, come in and help you fix, uh, find resolution for and, uh, just kinda get you on the straight and narrow again. Our job is to get in and get out, it's not, uh, I mean, not that we don't love the schools that we work with, but our job is not to be there forever with you, but it's really to build the strength of the board and to build the strength of your leadership. So I know that you already have an assistant director that is, seems to be very solid, so part of our proposal would be to, um, work with your assistant director and possibly coach her and get her ready to be a director if that's what you wanted. And/or to do a search for your director and then to, uh, do board trainings on conflict of interest and, uh, Brown Act and then bring your policies and procedures up to date so that all of your meetings are run appropriately according to your authorizers. And again, this is the optic that we want because chances are you're already doing a lot of those things, but it's simply, um, taking the things that you're doing and putting it out there in a, in a different format uh, so that it can be viewed as, yes, you're following, you're doing what we asked you to do. Uh, the downside for charter schools is that they are directly accountable to their authorizer and your authorizer can make a breakthrough. Sounds like you used to have a wonderful relationship with your authorizer and that's a goal of our company is to have you have that again and to be a liaison between you and your authorizer until your, um, your ship is riding, so to speak. So that's in a nutshell what we do. Uh, I did send, uh, my resume and bio down to you, I don't think I sent Michelle's, but hers is equally astonishingly good. I say that because we're, we're retired, we can say things like that. But, um, the one thing that I know to be true is we both failed miserably at retirement, but we love what we do and, and have a good time working with communities and students. Uh, I have a background in technology, in technology integration. Uh, Michelle has a background in, um, the Title I component, EL component, things like that. And then we're both very strong in curriculum assessment and then organizational structure, personnel matters and just, uh, community relations in general, that, that's a strength we both offer. So the proposal was put to you for a relatively short period of time and it includes, um, 10 days of service. Uh, and, um, the service is onsite and offsite service. And then it includes, uh, what we call, uh, our kind of free services for you because that's responding to emails, communications with board members, communications with staff members, communications with your authorizers. So the, the time is, is really built around the time that we're down there working or the time that we're working preparing documents up here for you for approval and, and then bringing your policies up to date and ongoing, if that makes sense, so. Uh, it's, it's, uh, and it's, and it's built on, um, 10 days a month of service where we can have more if we need more, but I don't think you're gonna need more personally. And, and I think we have, your contract is, is running until the end of November because I firmly believe that we can have a new executive director in place and, uh, have taken care of all of the items in your letter of concern easily by that time.
Okay. Uh, board, do you have any questions for Kathleen or her company?
I can hardly hear you.
Yeah.
Oh, they're asking if, if the board has any questions for you.
I'm just, can you hear me now? Yeah. Kathleen, so the question is to the board if they have any questions, uh, for you.
Okay.
You say 10 days a month, how many days in, uh, say in a week would you be here at school? Or in that month would you be here at school?
Uh, the days would be determined based upon your need. Uh, I would await, for example, any time that there's a board meeting scheduled, I would be down to a person for the meeting instead of like I am right now. Um, it might be my partner that is coming down and working, uh, in those areas as well. And then if the district says they have a meeting and they want my attendance at, absolutely, I'll be there for that. Any meetings that are required, anytime your staff needs me to be there, particularly your assistant director. Uh, so we would develop schedule based on your needs and, and go from there.
So if we were to schedule, say, a board meeting and then you would work assisting with someone, those would be the, the two days? Or would that be, like, if you worked with a person during the day and then attended a board meeting, would that be a day?
So, yeah, I try to put my days together. Um, we also, uh, keep, try to keep our travel costs at a minimum for you because we're very mindful of that. So, uh, we schedule with Airbnb places which tend to run $40 to $60 a night instead of $200 a night. And then we do travel, you know, we do a flat fee for travel. Um, the main office is, is located in Tracy, but I live in Auburn. So, $150 flat fee for travel down there is at the government rate is $0.54 a mile, which would put it up around $300. So we're saying basically a flat fee, or you produce a government rate. We try to make it fit your needs and what you want. Um, we're not here to dictate what we're going to do, we're here to work with you and have you work with us to say what you want us to do and then we check in with you along the way, share with you, this is what we're doing and this is what we need from you, but really, it's directed by you, the board.
Question, um, this is Nora, hi, how are you doing? Question for you, here it says, um, including travel time and also a minimum of eight and a half hours to a maximum of 12 hours. So your travel time is included in the hours provided in the eight and a half?
We don't, we don't charge for our travel time. So in any words, we just say we're coming down, if we have to be down there at eight in the morning, I'll start, probably start the night before, uh, or stay down in Tracy and then drive down from Tracy, which is about an hour, 45 minutes from where you are, um, in, in the morning and then stay overnight and go back. So for example, if I start the day at eight o'clock in the morning and we event a board meeting until midnight, which hopefully you guys don't do, but I've been in a lot of them just like that, that's one day. If that makes sense.
Well, it's just that, it has, on top it says including travel time and then at the bottom says other fees and charges and it has any lodging as needed for the 10 days, travel and it explains some of the amount.
So travel is not included, the, the actual travel cost. And the travel cost I include as travel and lodging, we don't, we don't charge for food. Um, so the cost of lodging and then the flat fee for mileage, so you could choose either mileage or travel. Let me give you an example. Uh, we flew down today from Sacramento to Orange County. Uh, my day ended just about a half an hour ago, but we left our house at 6:30 in the morning to get to the airport to get down there and they got charged just one day of service.
I see.
So, so that, that it's, it's just kinda built in as a package, dude, we just don't charge for travel time. We don't do that, we don't charge you hours for travel time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sergio Guzman. In addition to you 10 days per month, uh, also there is a charge for $900 per day. So that's besides those 10 days that you want me to be here and, uh,
If, if you go over the 10 days.
No matter if those 10 days, uh, or the 11th day or 13th day, would be part of the 30 days?
If you go over the 10 days and you say we need extra time, or I say you had, we already reached 10 days and there's other stuff scheduled this month, then it would be billed if it's a full day at, uh, and I have to be down there. And those are typically the days that I have to be down there, then it would be $900 flat fee for the day. If it's other work that I need to do that, that I do, uh, up here, well, not up here because of the guys out, but up in the Auburn area, then it would be billed at an hourly rate. So for example, putting agenda documents together, if I'm creating documents or putting your agenda together. If I'm creating documents or putting your agenda together, that takes about a year. And so that would be $95 for the hour if it's over and above. If it's not, if it's a part of my 10-day service and it gets accounted in. And I do, I do a spreadsheet with each invoice that itemizes the time and the jobs that were done. So you actually have an exact accounting of what kind of work was done and how long it took and what it is. And I won't run past my 10 days without fire approval.
So basically, the rate would be for 10 days. Does the clear answer or the clear, in order for me to understand clear numbers, it's not 30 days, it's a 10 days for the flat rate that you...
It's a 10-day flat fee, right? And then anything else would be over and above if it goes over.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Kathleen, this is Augustine. Can you hear me?
I can. I can see you too. Nice to see you.
You too. I just, in the contract that you sent over, there might need to be some corrections if we move forward with contracting with you. For example, we're considering some other options in terms of the interim executive director.
Okay.
Is that something we can, if we, if this were to be approved today, can we make those changes post-approval?
Absolutely. We'll just make it together. We just both have to sign our product.
Perfect. I just, yeah, I wanted to make sure that...
We can modify it at any time. And then the other thing too, and I wanted you to be really mindful of this, is that we can both decide or individually decide that it's not working out on either side and we can shorten the period or lengthen it depending on what your needs are as well.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Kathleen or Kathleen, any questions for the board?
Uh, no, but I would love to, like, see the whole board.
Oh, can you move that?
I touched the board.
Touch the screen. Wait, can you see it?
Have a glass of water or beer.
There you go. Now you see, you have to move that.
Now we're going to do a little spin. Oh, yeah.
You have to be able to spin out a little bit.
Oh, but it's...
There you go.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
Do you know where you want to see the band?
Okay, nice.
Yeah, this is who the rest of people are.
Good to see you again. So it's kind of fun to see the familiar faces. I also have to share that my husband and I went out to, when we left you, a couple weeks ago when I was young. We went out to, I think, kind of like a hiking area that is... Where was it?
Toro Park. We have several of those here, so...
Oh, it was beautiful. Whatever it was, it was beautiful. We ate in a cute little restaurant. And it's like it has an inlet that you can go kayaking in on the center, but then it goes right out to the bay. So it was really pretty fun.
Elkhorn Square.
Oh, and you've got your research center there. Where's that research center?
Moss, Moss Landing.
Moss Landing. We were at Moss Landing and I said, oh, I could live out here. He goes, no, you're not. But it was, we had a good time.
Okay.
But you're running 62 degrees out here right now.
All right. Thank you, Kathleen, for your time and we'll see where this board takes us.
Perfect. Just letting you know.
Great. Thank you.
Bye, thanks.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
So we... Okay. So that was it for the discussion items. Can we get an update on staffing and student family recruitment?
So currently, we have about 215 students in the role.
215, you say?
215. We have nine teachers. We did hire an ELD teacher. She has a doctorate's degree and we are hiring her full-time. She has accepted. We also recently hired a music teacher. So he's starting with us also. We'll have technology, five aides, plus our supervisor, head supervisor, who will also support classrooms when she's not in the recess supervision. I think as of now, that's pretty much it. I'm excited for the results.
Yeah, cool.
Art teacher?
There was some art teacher.
Oh, so... Yes, so we can only do one specialty right now due to the budget. And so it's basically based on whoever was going to be the best fit. And he, yeah, he has a bachelor in music and has worked with other local schools, Virginia Rock Garden Music Program. He also worked as a tutor supporting English rehearsals. I was like, hey, maybe. Maybe just a bigger thing for our buck. But yeah, currently it's just a music teacher. But we are, during our PD, going to, that's part of what I'm going to do, is show teachers how they can integrate art into their...
So in terms of, all right, everyone, in terms of the administrative position, our commitment to the school district is that we are going to hire an interim director to start the school year and then conduct a full search for the executive director permanent position. We, it's been open and we have received applicants, but we are going to go with an interim director first to just stabilize. And then whether we decide to go with Momni Cafe to help us do a full search or if we decide for a committee comprised of the community to hire, we're still going to work on that, but we're going to take prior time. I don't know when exactly we're going to do that hiring, but it's going to be either throughout the semester or at a time where we're more stable to make sure that we get the right person that comes off to be the executive director. That's where we are with the administrative position. Any questions for staffing or... Good job with hiring some additional teachers and starting...
Yeah, I'm excited about our ELD teacher. I mean, she did her full dissertation on hands-on learning, project-based, constructivist. And when I called her, she's like, I don't have to think about it. I want to be there. So I'm very excited to have her on board.
Okay, good.
Thank you for inviting me to be part of the process right now.
Okay. So let's go to some action items here. The first is the contracting of this Momni Cafe for administrative and board support. Wait for that. We're sorry, it was unfinished. So in order to move forward, I entertain a motion. Is there anyone that'd like promotion to open discussion?
I move that we open discussion regarding the Momni Cafe.
Give a second.
I second.
All right. Discussion.
To me, it's very expensive and very expensive and it's very limited time that they want to put with the staff and the board. So it's not clear also. The areas that they go to work, very big in some areas. So that's my overview.
I agree. It's $8,000 a month beside, and that's only for 10 days. And any additional day is $900. And that's not even onsite. Some of them are onsite, most of them are offsite. And our budget is good.
Anyone else?
Mine's all about money. It's the same money.
Yeah, right now, we don't have budget for that, so I know we have JP, so...
Yeah. So I was actually at the presentation. There was three of us that worked at the presentation from this company. And it was Mike, Erica, and myself. The expertise that this company has is great. And I had a conversation briefly with the school district and they're kind of leaving it up to the things that the side letter or the agreement letter that we came up with. That's what they're going to hold us accountable for. So if we have an executive interim director, that's what they're going to hold us accountable for. Didn't necessarily say that we have to go to an outside agency to do it. So the pros and cons, from my perspective, the pros are she has great expertise that we use. The cons is it's very pricey, very, very expensive, in my opinion. We already have these same type of services in terms of board development with JP O'Hanlon. And for the academic support, we already have some services from...
Ed Vandenberg.
Ed Vandenberg is providing consulting services to the administration. So a couple of those areas that she would support us with were already covered through some other contractors. When we had, when the information was presented, I thought it was a great idea. But now we are hit with this budget, updated budget, that we're not going to be receiving. So now I'm very concerned about where we use this money and how effectively we use it. And so, yeah. Anyone else?
For my part, if, as we say, it's about $9,000 realistically.
Realistically, $9,000 with travel expenses and so on. So it's about $9,000 a month.
So if we ran through November, it would be about $36,000. And initially, it seems like a lot of money to spend for a part-time administrator. But at the same time, I say, well, if we were hiring a part-time administrator, they would probably come at about $65,000 or $70,000. Look, it seems about the right price for that, but that comes down to, do we really need this person? And I'm not sure. I really, I mean, it'd be nice to have someone with that expertise. You could call up at any minute and say, what about this? And see what she had to say. But at the same time, I think we can go to JP, we can go to Ed, and there's probably resources in the community that we, I mean, in the educational community locally, we could probably tap, I think. So there's that.
That else, the musical district, their cabinet?
Yeah.
Guys with some support.
They said they would.
They said they would. So maybe it's time to hit them up.
Well, some numbers have changed now, so maybe they're...
Okay. Okay, any other comments, concerns? All right, so it's time to vote on this thing. So all those in favor of approving this contract with this company? Say aye. All those against?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we are not contracting this company. All right. Well, that leaves us with, then we need to really tap into the resources that we have. So I say, well, depending on what you do with the next thing, it's time to set a meeting with the school district and see if we can utilize some of their expertise in some of these areas that we support with. They are the authorizer. We do pay them oversight fees. And so it's time to talk to their people and see where we can get some support. Get some oversight here. All right, moving on to the next, the contracting of the janitorial services. And we can get a motion to approve one of these companies.
I move that we approve one of the three companies who's given us their proposals.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Some pros and cons. Can I hear from those of you who were here present when these companies were here? What your feeling is behind this?
My feelings? So we'll start with Pure Janitorial. Pure Janitorial, I mean, all three of them are local. I wanted to go local. There was other agencies I could have brought in from other places, but I like to keep our business local. So Pure Janitorial, they are, they're all family-owned. They're all, like, have mom and pop that do this. Pure Janitorial is all about the kids. He says he services a lot of different organizations around the community and he knows where our school, he knows we're limited on funding, which was the reason why we were looking to bring someone in. So that was my big part. They are, we went around through everywhere. He pointed out things that needed to be done where I was like, oh, that does need to be taken care of. So they were very detailed in their work that they, that they were going to do. J&amp;M came in. They were a little more rushed to come in. They are a little more busy. They said it would be a little harder to be here five days a week, but they can make it happen. So they weren't as detailed as I was hoping they were when they came in. Central Coast Cleaning, she was amazing. Like, she very detail-oriented, I mean, to like the tops of the door. I mean, just all areas, but she was also one of the pricier ones. When I seen her proposal along with the first one with Pure, it kind of really went hand in hand. So, I mean, my suggestion, I would, I mean, Pure seemed good for me, like, the way he came across and what he's offering and kind of balances out with exactly what Central Coast was going to do. But...
Okay, thank you. So the first proposal is for $26.50 a month for the basic services outline. And then if we need carpet cleaning, which, how often does the carpet cleaning happen?
So we do carpet cleaning twice a year.
Okay.
We do it in December, Christmas time, and then we do it at the end of the year. And this is about what we pay already. So it's kind of, it's already an expense that we do. Yeah.
Did the other companies outline their additional costs? I don't see that. They're the only ones that...
They were the only ones who outlined it.
That put in additional, right?
Yeah.
But the other ones didn't include it, so it would be...
It would be additional, yes, right.
Yeah, I know Central Coast doesn't do carpet cleaning or the stripping of the floors, so they would contract out and then we would be responsible for that. So she doesn't include it in the last one.
The last one, okay.
Yeah, and the pressure washing of the playground and the sidewalks out, we also do two times a year.
Right, we do that twice a year too.
Okay.
There it is. I like that they would bring their own equipment, their own mops and things. That we didn't have to keep worrying about it. And they would take it away and wouldn't, well...
We wouldn't have to store it.
Yeah. But it's always nice to have a couple of them lying around that we can make sure that happens.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions about the three proposals?
Any of those companies provide services to another school?
Um, I... I wanted to say Pure does to a school, not in Salinas. I want to say they're in Seaside or Marina. But they do do another school. Yeah, and so when I asked about like products and stuff, what are these? And they use the same stuff we use from American Supply. And so they'll provide us with all, like, the whole, what American Supply provides us, it's the same stuff. Yes.
Yeah, it's included in that one.
It's included in there, yeah. I just wanted to make sure they were using the same products that, the school ones that we were using through American Supply, and they said yes.
Could you guys ask how many, like, staff they bring?
How many staff members do we use?
How many staff members do they bring, like, on a daily?
Between four and five.
Okay.
Because of everything that I wanted done. Because of everything we wanted done on a daily basis.
Right, so they're going to bring more than two people?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. No, they never do work in twos and two-drees or fours. They never leave each other alone. I'm like, okay.
And the contract is month by month, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. Then just to redefine the motion with, if you've already kind of made a decision on one company versus the other. Mike, since you made the motion, do you want to sort of motion it with...
I use my big voice.
I'll use my big voice. I move that we. I move that we accept the contract bid from Pure Janitorial Services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor to approve Pure Janitorial Services for a contract for our general maintenance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can somebody let them know? Please. And the last item on our administration, uh, I'm sorry. Is, I don't know if I wanna recuse. From this one.
You can go set up or recuse. Back horn or you recuse yourself.
Okay, so as part of, again, the agreement with the school district was to find a qualified interim executive director until we could do the full search. We obviously looked at all the different options that we had. One was a company that would provide services. The other is obviously our current.
Interim.
Interim, our, our current assistant director. And we looked at Lucy's qualifications and they are, they are the qualifications that we have in the agreement letter with the school district. So all they required is that the person be an administrative, have an administrative credential in the qualifications to be an executive director. And so, so the proposal really is to have our current assistant be the interim executive director to get the school started. And so that's what's on the table. It will be, we'll have to work on, obviously, her salary and all those things that we need to work on, but for the time being, so that we know that it's somebody who's already qualified, we know somebody who knows the school. I think it'd be a wise choice. So can somebody make a motion? Or, and then we'll talk, discuss it in a little bit. And we'll discuss it.
I move that we discuss proving Lucette's subpoena for.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, I think that, that it's, okay, sorry, sorry. I think that Lucette is here every single day. So it's not like the Mommy's Cafe, which ten days out of the month and most of them not onsite. So I think the fact that she's here every single day and with her credentials and with her experience, she would be a good candidate for the interim.
Anyone else? Comments?
I'm a hundred, ninety-nine point nine percent favor. I, my only concern is that Lucy's relatively young and she has run the place, but she's been right next to people who have been doing it. And she knows the place inside and out. She's been a parent, she was a student teacher, she was a new teacher, she did also all kinds of work here. And I have complete confidence in her ability to do it, but there's that little tiny bit that's like, other than that, I'd vote for it. Without hesitation.
I think, well, the fact that you mentioned that she doesn't have that much experience as a director or interim director, true, but we have a great support group for the interim. With our other two advisors, just JP Connor and the training and Ed Vandenberg.
And she's worked with that a lot.
And she has.
In the relationship.
Yes. And she also has given support to all the teachers. So she's really familiar with everything we do here, our teachers and the OIS as well. So we have a good support group for the interim director.
Very true. Any other comments?
I think she's aware of our current situation. She's been here a while. She knows most of the parents, staff. She's a great addition. I just hope she understands the responsibilities that she's about to resume picking up. So as an interim, do we have a timeframe before we look for a permanent person? You know, I just hope she's fully aware of what's coming her way. That's my thing. Time away from her kids, her family. There's a lot of work, dedication, involvement, as we all know, so.
Would you like to hear from her?
Actually, the comment part, yeah, I would like to hear from her.
Okay, bring her in for a, like, a comment. And then we'll recuse her, we'll recuse her again.
It's like, married to your job. I don't know what that's about, so. Or her husband, how's he feel about it?
Husbands don't count. Spouses don't count on this.
They're just along for the ride.
Right?
Thank you guys for showing up tonight on July thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, yeah. Is it thirty?
Yes.
It is July thirtieth.
Dang.
You've been working too hard.
Ah, yeah. See that truck out there? That means I'm working. Now you got to solve.
Are there some questions or are there some comments for you that wanted to be here? First of all.
Pete? The comments are, do you fully understand the responsibility that's coming your way managing the school with a thousand people that are included in this? How does, how do you feel that's gonna affect your personal life at home, with your children, your husband, being done? A lot. Are you fully aware of the responsibility that's coming your way?
I am fully aware of it. It has been a challenge to work it out, but what I can tell you is that I do have a strong support. I mean, my husband's back there and I mean, my mom, they're all supportive of what I do. They know that it's time to continue. I'm aware of this, but I have a passion for it and I believe in it and I'm willing to put in work. I mean, even if I work long hours like I did last night, even. Because there's a lot of behind the scenes stuff. It's not only here, it's also at home.
It's gonna take a lot of commitment, yeah, from, from your family. And you need to understand that. Other things on your education, are you continuing to grow educationally?
I plan to. I do. I don't plan to stop. I've always wanted to continue just because I like learning and building and growing. I mean, I know one day, not now, but maybe when my little one is older, even pursue a doctorate, so. That's one of my, it's on my bucket.
It's good to have goals.
Yeah.
Right, Mike?
Yes.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I don't know. Well, I think that's not up to me.
It should be really quick.
I'm going to be. I definitely have been preparing and doing lots of research, doing, you know, looking at what we've done and, you know, learning from not only last year, but every year from when I was in the classroom to now and what the needs are of the school and what really needs to happen and what we can do to improve. Safety, curriculum, just all around.
How good are you at conflict resolution and problem solving?
I think, well, that, that, see, I, I'm gonna say I'm good.
No, no, no.
I feel, I feel comfortable. I mean, I like to listen to both sides before I come to a consensus. I like to be a team player. I never feel like I have the authority over anyone. I think that everyone's point of view is valid and should be considered. And, you know, then we can come to an agreement, but I haven't, in regards to staff, I mean, I work with adults all the time and I've had to mediate, I've had to problem solve, I've had to talk to staff members about changes. And so far, they still like me. So I'm gonna say that, that I am.
I'm done, I'm done.
Question for you. Is there anything you think that this board can help you with in that role?
I think just finding support for me. I mean, it's hard right now just being on the phone and I know it's a lot. And like I've said before, I mean, it's probably harder right now as we're starting the year to stop and train someone because realistically, they need to be trained, not maybe in the areas of expertise, but just in how, how things are run here. So I think that right now, the main focus is just to start the year and start strong and then find that support. Like I mentioned, what I've seen earlier, Elizabeth is willing to help with data. We do have a consultant who has a lot of expertise. I mean, superintendent, you know, principal of charter school, has led ten plus charter schools, instructionally has, you know, gotten gains academically. And I think that we should, I need to get more support from him and whoever else can come on board to support me after this school year starts, I think, well, now our consultants, I'm just gonna maximize as much as I can, I don't know. But I do need, I do need a psychic.
Any other comments, questions? Hold, I'm sorry, second.
Not from okay.
Oh, you're good?
Yeah.
All right, so can you please step out for a minute?
I want to take my phone, so.
It keeps ringing too.
That way no one has to walk all the way to whoever.
It's good for us.
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the attention's passed.
Come back now.
Come back. All right, so we have an interim executive director.
By the time we send it, she'll be back in the room.
Let's see if that's true. Cool.
Clap again when she comes back.
It was me first.
There, she'll clap again when she comes back.
Why not?
It's good feeling.
All right, that means I'm in, right?
That means. You're ready for this.
That can change anytime.
I know that, I know.
All right, so we fulfilled one of the four requirements of the school district out of that, that agreement. So we're on, we're on the red top here to getting those, those on board. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And please count on anyone that's sitting at this table to support you for this. Let us know what you need, okay? All right, announcements.
So school resumes August first. We do have TD Plan.
Staff.
Staff. Tomorrow.
Scary people.
Staff returns August first. Professional development starts the first through the ninth. The tenth is our meet and greet. And then school resumes for the students on the thirteenth. That entire week, we have minimum days. And then playground, I know that they're working on the permits, so as of now, it's looking like it'll begin in late August. We do have a plan for when construction is.
Okay. All right, any other items for the video gathering? All right, before we end, I just want to make a statement. Thank you to all of those, everyone here present for coming today. It was not a scheduled meeting, so we scheduled because we had, in other words, it's not one of our meetings that's on the board, so we had to expect a meeting. Not a special meeting, but a meeting where we had to address some issues, so that's why we got together. And that's why, just on the wall, I limited the amount of comments this time around. So that, that's the answer that I have for you. I know it's not the one that you probably want to hear, but it's because these items needed to get through quickly. And today I decided not to take any, any comments on those items. That might change in the future. I hope that we can oversee that this one time. But I'm more interested in letting everyone know that we're committed, this board is committed to ensuring that we have a great start to the year and that we continue with that. That we see the challenges that we had last year as an opportunity to grow and to move forward positively and to let you know that this board is committed to implementing positive change. Not so interested in the negative change, because that, that is part of sometimes what we need to do, but, but we're more interested in when people come to the board that they bring positive solutions in the best interests of the children of this school. We're committed to supporting those. But it's gonna, we need to, we need to have a fresh and positive start at the beginning of the year. I urge all of you to instill that in the children, if you have children in the school, that they not look backwards, that they look forward. And we have brand new teachers. It's an opportunity, it's a great opportunity for this school. Brand new teachers, mid to seasoned administrator that we now have, who we could not ask for a better person to step, step up to the challenge as an interim. I see nothing but positivity moving forward. And I hope that the OIS's community sees the same. That from this board is what you're going to be constantly hearing. There's not a problem that we can't solve. Let's work on, let's work on that together. That's my statement. We'll see you at the beginning of the year, right? Okay, I'm calling this meeting to end at seven fifty-five PM. Thank you.